And welcome to the very first meeting for the year 2020. Today is January the 7th, and we would like to start our meeting out, we'd like to welcome you first to the Gary Common City Council. We'd like to start our meeting out with prayer from overseer Dr. Kevin Lomorn from New Bethel Friendship Church of God and Christ in Gary. Could we please stand for prayer and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
Shall we pray? Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for your love and kindness and for your tender mercy. Father, we thank you for being omnipresent, God. We thank you for knowing all and for being everywhere at the same time. We thank you that you allowed us to cross over into 2020. God, without you, we're nothing and we can't make it. So Father, we ask your blessings upon these council members and upon our mayor. Father, we thank you that you would give them wisdom to carry out the matters of your thoughts and your plans. We thank you, Father, for your divine protection for this city, and God, we thank you for resurrection power. In Jesus' name we pray. The people say, "Amen."
Amen. Let's introduce to the flag of United Exotica and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much. Certainly want to welcome our new council for 2020. So Madam Clerk, would you get us a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Atkins?
Here.
Councilwoman Brewer?
Present.
Councilwoman Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Here.
Councilman Godwin?
Present.
Councilman Lay?
Present.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Present.
Councilman Williams?
Present.
And President Brown?
Here.
Mr. President, there are nine presidents, zero absent.
Thank you. Uh, well, we first, can we get a motion for the approval of the previous minutes?
Mr. President, I move that the minutes from the meeting on January 1st be approved.
Second.
December 17th.
There was two meetings.
We had two meetings, December 17th.
Yes.
It's been motioned properly second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Godwin?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes.
Mr. President, vote is nine to zero.
Thank you. Um, so my one will, um, do I have a motion out on the floor for our standing committees at this time? Assignments for 2020?
Mr. President, I move that the committees that have been, um, all the committees be approved as, as whatever. We have, we have them in front of them, so I move that they be approved.
Second.
It's been motioned and properly second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
No.
Councilman Godwin?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is a yes, one no.
Okay, thank you. I think at this point, we have an assignment for pending ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah. One.
CPO 2020-01, an ordinance establishing additional appropriations for Fund 261-5701, Commission for Women Shelter Rehab, sponsored by Mayor Jerome Prince, City of Gary, Angela Hayes, City Controller, Community Development Department.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, I have been asked by the Community Development Department to defer this ordinance, so my motion is that we defer 2020-01.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned and properly second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Godwin?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is nine to zero.
Okay. Uh, are there probably on the point, uh, they've been assigned, so let's go to...
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, I have some donations that the city has received, so I need to read those, and it's a list, so I need to read them.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, the city has received the following donations for the Rainbow Ark Shelter. Uh, from Christie, Camilla, Chrissy, Linder, Nancy, Judy, winter hats and gloves, Marie De Fire Fitness, and Eric Smoot, $250 each for 11 women, car seats, books, and toys for 12 kids in the shelter, Edgewater Health System, 150 pairs of socks, St. Mark AM Church Chicago, two boxes of Christmas cookies, Marham Health Center, shampoo, conditioner, soap, and women's hygiene products, Boiling Company Chicago, 100 bags of toys, gave approval to utilize for shelter and community outreach, Sigma Gamma Row, kid shoes and house slippers, Thea Bowman Leadership Academy, Honor Society, winter hats and gloves, and scarves, I'm sorry, National Sorority of Phi Delta Kappa, winter hats and gloves, Carolyn Allen and Roosevelt class of 1985, seven purses with personal hygiene products, T&amp;B Tube Company, Gary, Indiana, women's and kids new homeless coats, Greater Grace Church, 12 boxes of feminine hygiene products, Ashley Montgomery, three brand new children's coats, Delta Sigma Theta, 12 catered individual meals for clients, Horseshoe Casino, catered meal for 12 clients, Kimberlin McGee, clothing and shoes, National Sorority of Phi Delta Kappa, cleaning supplies, canned goods and clothing, New Revelation MB Church Progressive Circle, four bottles of Tide detergent, and 40 personal hygiene kits, and Prayer Tower Fellowship Church, three food bags of Thanksgiving items. Mr. President, I move that we accept these donations.
Second.
Point of view, Mr. President?
Yes.
This document still has Mayor Karen Freeman Wilson as the mayor, Dana Bennett as chief of staff, and it's dated January the 7th at the top of the document.
See the document.
Why, why is this document not reflecting?
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I can't hear you down here.
I'm sorry. That document indicates the mayor is Karen Freeman Wilson, and the chief of staff, Mayor Bennett, and it's dated January the 7th. It was not a change of charge, or it was dated January 7th, should that change.
Yes. That's my correction. Uh, please do correct it.
Uh, another question. Are those individuals expected tax deductions?
Pardon?
Those donations. Is anyone expecting a tax deduction since they're given, I would assume to the city?
I was given these by the controller and asked to mention that they were donations that were given to the shelter.
That's my whole fault with what you wrote. Somebody said, if they're expecting tax deductions, then these have to be valued in some way, and there should be a document and a control.
Okay, I don't know what they're worth, so that will have to get from the controller. I don't have that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The controller is here, if the controller can come and answer those questions.
The controller, could you please come forward, please? There's some questions here. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Um, what I have listed there is what I received from the Rainbow Shelter. Um, the individuals would not be expecting a tax write-off on that because as a city, we can't, we can't give that. So those were items I think were just donated to the shelter as, if they're listed there.
Well, no, they can get it. They get tax deductions from the city.
They cannot.
When did that occur? I thought we should verify that. But by the way, why is this documented? Why is this document carried to previous mayor and the previous?
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you, sir.
The last time that I heard of the city, 2020, it was reflected by Karen Freeman Wilson's address.
And originally, that was done in December. It just, we didn't bring it forward. So I changed the date without changing the letterhead, and I can make that correction. Because these donations have already been accepted and used at the shelter.
So amendment needs to be made, um, at this time, Mr. President, to reflect that Jerome Prince, the mayor, could be reflected on there, and the chief of staff could be reflected on there also.
And to make sure that all the... And to make sure that all the letterhead from the previous mayor and department is rolled, and all the problems.
So that's my motion, to make amendment that the letterhead be changed with the mayor, Jerome Prince, and the chief of staff, current chief of staff, to be put on there. That's my motion.
Second. Any questions on the motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I didn't anticipate to be speaking this early, but happy to be here. Uh, yeah, to a point, all the letterhead has been rolled. I'm sure this is an oversight by the controller, and it's one that we'll certainly forgive this time, but I apologize for any inconvenience. Thank you.
I was about to introduce you, and I have all the members here. So my one, have a question on the motion? In the comments? Yes. Any comments on the motion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Godwin?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is nine to zero.
Thank you. Pass is nine to zero. Our next item would be special and select. So we got, that's just amendment. Thank you so much. That's why we have you here. So, so we've voted on the amendment.
Yes.
So now we go back to vote to accept the donation.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, we, uh, the council approved the holiday schedule for the city.
No, oh, excuse me, councilwoman, I think we, we've done the amendment for the letterhead. Now we have to do an initial motion to accept the donations because we had a problem with the donations based on the letterhead, so we had to correct that. Am I right?
Right, we just need to vote.
So we need to vote now? Okay. So before we go any further, now you just need to vote?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to vote on the amendment based on the donation as well as the correction for the letterhead. Okay?
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Godwin?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes.
Mr. President, vote is nine to zero.
Councilwoman Brown, you have a floor.
Uh, Mr. President, the council approved the holiday schedule for the city at, I believe it was the last meeting in December. We need to amend that ordinance. We did not include President's Day on there, so we need to include President's Day, which is, um, February 17th, I think it is. Yeah.
That's correct.
So we need to include that, we need to amend that holiday schedule and include that holiday on there.
Second.
Monday, February 17th.
So it's been motioned and properly second. It's been motioned. Any question? On the motion? Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Godwin?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is nine to zero.
The vote is nine to zero, vote is passed. So the next thing we will go to now is special and select.
Mr. President?
Yes?
The Board of Commissions would like to make a couple appointments. Board of Commissions would like to appoint Jerick and Lewis as the Economic Development Commission.
Been motioned and properly second. Questions about the motion? Any none?
Is Mr. Lewis present? Is he here?
No, he is.
Nothing further.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Godwin?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes.
Mr. President, vote is nine to zero.
Vote passes nine to zero. Next item.
Uh, we have Kevin Brown being appointed to the Board of Zoning and Appeals. That's my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Or did we, did we hear the motion?
She gave a motion, so she didn't need a second.
Yes, I, did I get a second? Second. Thank you. Uh, any questions on the motion?
Is that person present?
What's the question?
No, they're not.
Uh, as a suggestion, in some cases, we may not know the person. I'm not objecting to the person, but I would appreciate for them to at least come and reappoint these appointments.
Well, they were interviewed in front of...
I'm just talking about future, that's all. Nothing further.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Passed.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Godwin?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Abstained.
President Brown?
Yes.
Mr. President, vote is a yes, one abstention.
The motion passed.
Mr. President, Board of Commissions has a vacancy for the Transportation Board. This vacancy is for a Republican. Anyone interested should send their letter of interest along with a resume to the Gary Common Council, 41 Broadway, Suite 209, Gary, Indiana, 46402, and the deadline for those letters will be Friday, January the 30th, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmen, special and select, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, um, someone that's going to come, Ms. Nessa Allen from the Urban League is going to come, um, do a presentation. Oh, and I see Mr. Elliott is here also. If you two can come at this time to the mic, and they have a presentation that they'd like make before it's turned to census.
Good evening, Mr. President, and to the members of the council, to Mayor Jerome Prince and the listening audience, Happy New Year. Before I present on the census, I must present on the Urban League of Northwest Indiana. We have scholarships that will be available to all graduating high school seniors. They can get anywhere from $250 to $2,500, maybe $5,000. They're offered by a number of people. For instance, the Gary Frontiers Service Club offers $500. The late Senator Carolyn Mosby, there are about $5,000 available for students. They must apply through the Urban League. It's a website. Those, that information will be sent out on Monday, so I have to talk about Urban League.
And I'm sorry, it was my cloud, I forgot the right...
The next thing I want to do is talk about the census. I have information here for each one of you, and I also have some other little water bottles if you get thirsty, but the census is here, it's coming, this is the year. We want everyone to be counted. Um, I'm serving as the Census Chair of Gary, Indiana. Gary, Indiana, must count everybody, everybody in your house, your cousins, your nephews, your children, anybody that's in your house, please count them so that we can get the funding that is due us. We want everyone to be counted. If you will look at your forms, uh, council members that I just passed out to you, you will see that the census actually will start March 12th through the 20th. There will be an invitation that's sent out. The next date is March 26th through April 1st. If you have not responded, you will get another postcard. April 20th through the 27th is a final reminder. There are about 10 questions on the census, just 10 questions, and I gave that information to all of the city council, and you can see that on the back. Why does this matter? Because it affects our money for free breakfast programs for the youth, head style, recreation, Pell Grants, Pell, I'm going to say Pell Grants again, because that really affects me, but I'm too old right now. But it affects rental market, influence job parks, voting reform, Medicare, public health care, senior housing. I'm probably in the senior range right about now. If, don't be too sure. You know, so it's important, and so I'm going to continue to come out along with Nicholas. We've been hanging out at a lot of places. We've gone to the 12 Night Revival with all of the churches. Nicholas has been there along with other representatives. We will be meeting, uh, we have several committees. We have a faith-based committee, we have a media committee, which Mike Gonzalez will be coming and joining us per the direction of Mayor Prince. Thank you. We have the homeless and veterans committee that's run by Dr. Sharon Liggins. We also have the Chief of Staff Attorney, Arlene Colvin, who also serves as the Vice Chair. This is very important. Last year, uh, not last year, 10 years ago, Gary lost its status by about 500 people. Now, we know we have more than Hammond, we know this. We just have to go out and be counted, and so, so people won't be nervous about filling out this information. If any of you, and yes, there's jobs. I think you can speak about the jobs, Nicholas. Where do, where do, now he has the jobs.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, so you go up to 2020census.gov/jobs, and there you'll find opportunities that are here in the county that we're hiring right now. The pay in Lake County is $25 and some change, so please go on the website if you know of anybody interested in work. Uh, most of the positions will be census enumerators, which will be going to door-to-door, knocking on doors, get reimbursed for mileage of 58 cents a mile. Uh, it's a great opportunity for folks to move to work.
And we're also in the schools. There is a census poster contest that's right now in the schools. Um, the elementary preschool and elementary, they can do a poster saying, "My Census, My Home." The middle schools are doing, "My Census, My City." They're doing a poster. The high school is doing, "My Census, Gary's Future." They're going to win some money. You have to turn in those posters to the Urban League by January 16th. Urban League is located 3101 Broadway. The phone number there is 219-887-9621. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President, for this opportunity.
Thank you for your work you've been doing with the Urban League, and thank you for being so active in our 2020 census, it's so important. Is there any other council member who would like to comment about the Urban League or the 2020 census at this time? Thank you, Councilwoman Brewer. Uh, any more special and select for you, sir?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a few announcements. Uh, we're going to have our first community event in the 1st District, Coffee with the Councilman. It will be January the 25th, Saturday, January 25th, 2020, 9:00 a.m. to noon, at Anna's Kombucha Cafe, right in the shops on Lake Street District, at 624 South Lake Street. To schedule a specific time to meet with me, please call Ms. Sherri Smith at the council office, 219-881-1315. That's Saturday, January 25th, 9:00 to noon, Coffee with the Councilman. Miller Citizens Corporation is holding a meeting greet with myself, along with council members Ron Brewer, Mike Brown, and Chlores Lay. This event will be on Monday, January 13th, 2020, at the Aquatorium at 7:00 p.m., and certainly, uh, folks of the 1st District are invited and others to come and meet with the Miller Citizens Corporation. Lastly, Temple Israel, one of the great institutions of faith in our city and certainly in our district, is having its annual trivia, uh, which is a lot of fun, so if you want to get a team together, it's a great community building event, and that event will also be on Saturday, January 25th. Doors will open at 5:30 p.m., and the gangs will begin at 6:30 p.m. Please contact Temple Israel at 601 North Montgomery to learn further information. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further special and select, please?
Mr. President?
Please, please.
Um, staying focused on my commitment to the 4th District, I would like to introduce an initiative. Um, in an effort to activate the engagement of the young people of our community into the civic process, I would like to introduce the 4th District Student of the Month Recognition Award. This monthly recognition award is designed to acknowledge those students who promote and take pride in themselves and in their community. The qualifications are, the student should reflect a positive attitude towards learning, demonstrate responsibility, respectful to peers and teachers, they have to be a Gary resident that attends a Gary-based school, the student needs to be in grades 1 through 12, have a passing grade point average of C+ or better, and display an act of good that has benefited their household or the community. Examples of such should be that the student volunteered recently, or cleaned up consistently for their family, or possibly obtained a recent grade citizenship report from their school. Um, the nomination requirement is that the nominee who is nominating the student should submit the student's name, school, grade, address, district of residency. So to be inclusive, this is not just a 4th District-only award, it is sponsored by the 4th District, uh, but the award is open to all Gary's residents, um, who previously, um, who have met the requirements that were previously stated. So the nominee should submit a short write-up displaying those qualifications. The submissions can be submitted to the Gary Common Council, um, making sure that you have attention, Councilwoman Ty Atkins. You can also call my assistant, Ms. Karen Lane, at 219-881-1315 to get the additional information if you missed all the, the rhetoric that I just put out. The submissions for our first award will be due by January 24th, and the first student award will be announced during the February 7th public meeting. Also, the 4th District will be having their first communication with the citizens of the 4th District. Uh, we will have a table talk with Ty. It will take place on Thursday, January the 30th, at the Family Community Life Center, which is located in the 4th District at 565 Massachusetts. The timeframe will be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Lastly, Mr. President and council, um, I would like to acknowledge that yesterday, um, no, January 6th, um, in the early morning hours, there was a homicide reported to have happened in the 600 block of West 19th Avenue. Um, this has left a gaping hole in the lives of many of my associates within this community. So to the family and close friends of Wadallas, TJ Tobar, also known as Dallas Prime, um, I would like to extend my sincere condolences to you. Wadallas was a classmate of mine, he was a 2001 graduate of Westside High School. Um, the paper has just referred to him as the second homicide of the city of Gary, uh, but he was more than that. Wadallas was a great father. He has a beautiful spirit. He had a smile that can kind of light up this room. He was a caring soul. So to my friend Tiffany Delworth, one of his precious children, her name is Mia Tobar, little Bree, and Brandon Upshaw, each of you are in my heart sending my prayers. I'm praying for you and with you. So to the citizens of this city, we should stay focused on what's really important. We cannot let senseless violence be normalized within our community. I am hopeful that justice will be prepared for T.J., and also that the responsible parties will be brought forth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilwoman. Thank you so much for your compassion, and I truly happen to agree with you. We've got to not put numbers on people because people's lives matter, not just to us, but to the family members, and too many times we assume that it's okay when it's not. One other item of note, there's a sign-in sheet. Does someone happen to have it? Because we need it in order to have people come forward. The sign-in sheet, does someone have it? Okay, all right. It belongs to the census. If someone would like to sign in, why don't you please come to the podium to my left, your right, thank you, and sign in because we want to be long. Thank you very much. Let's continue, special needs select. Any other councilman at this time, please? It's our first council meeting. If you'd like to say something, please don't hesitate.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm gonna go up to anyone else that needs to go, but I would like to say thank you for giving this opportunity, and let's say happy new year to everyone that I have not seen thus far. I want to say a thank you to Captain Brian Woods, retired from the Gary Police Department, thirty-five and a half years to this great city, and we want to just show our appreciation to the service that he has rendered to this great community, and say, John, well done, thirty-five years serving us on the Gary Police Department. I received a call on yesterday from several citizens that were saying that they was going to DNR services to drop off, and there's no drop-off. They no longer can drop off a DNR. Contacted DNR, they're saying that they're no longer the provider for the city, and I continue to get calls today, the people that was trying to drop off debris and things of that nature, and citizens want to know where should they drop off those items there because they know a lot of time when people load up a truck, and they cannot dispose those things properly, they will find someplace to drop those things off. So I just need to know where should citizens take those items to drop off? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Mr. President?
Yes, yes.
I want to say, I want to say to you privately.
Yes.
Up until December the twenty-seventh, I was going to accept the position of president of the council. Unfortunately, I had some health issues. I think I'm coming along quite well, but they have not been resolved, and Councilman Brown stepped up with a very short notice to take the presidency. I talked to him personally, and I'd like to thank him publicly.
Thank you.
There was another one, fifteen fifteen, two thousand twenty. It was supposed to be, unless it's supposed to be, I'm gonna cancel it, and Senate Council voted back with. Unfortunately, only about twenty percent of the members had participated, but only a little bit of fifty, as we had anticipated, I started off to cancel, cancel, I'm sorry. The most important cancel is opposed to postpone, I can't give you a definite date. The board has to deal with health issues, a very particular health issue. That is the reason that it is being canceled. I've talked to the committee, we're all in agreement, basically, I'm supposed to say I'm working at the invitations after. I've talked to the council, John Keever, and as I said, I invited him to the board, so he's gonna go along with my position. Each council member already has been given a lapel plan to show the active members of the council. All the council members have been given a lapel plan, not a fat board that's presented, or lifted on the list since he came to the council in two weeks. So he is one of the first to receive it, but any council person has to do is come and take my legislative aide, Janice White, eight eight one one three one five, and she will have a lapel plan for previous council people. So if you're calling and coming to the council office, she will have them. Again, the committee that was part of this act with certainly owed for July and August, but to attempt to make up eighty percent would be quite difficult, and unfortunately, I had proposed that I would guarantee the six thousand dollars, so best of all, my conversation with the council people again, they agreed, maybe we should postpone, but I'm gonna say cancel, and should we decide to do it in the future, it will be a much easier assignment because we know exactly what to do. There is one person I think I must acknowledge. Her name is Agnor Madalas. She was an icon here in this city, never been able to go politics. I'm not sure that Agnor ever won a race, but I'm sure she was instrumental in a lot of people winning races. She certainly insisted on going to politics. I told her, but of course, you can see her right now, that movement sustained itself, but she was very important in her life, and her funeral is gonna be at St. John Baptist Church this Saturday at nine o'clock. If you don't go there yet, and have never met her, I'm sure you have missed her, of course, in this great, nice community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any more special needs selected at this time?
Yeah, I'm starting. I'd like to call, I want to thank the mayor for coming out this past week with the press conference in the second district, in particular, Edison School. One is the condition, the situation that we have in our schools, of course, beyond the condition that they are, you know, poses a safety hazard to this community, as well as, of course, it brings down property values. So again, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for having a press conference in particular at Edison, because as far as I'm concerned, that may be the worst of the scores that we're trying to get corrected. So again, thank you.
Anything else, councilman? Anything else? Yes.
Mr. President, on tomorrow at six P.M., there'll be a bike giveaway for a hundred and sixty-seven club members at the J.W.A. Club, sponsored by the Jackson family, well-known as the Jackson Five, Hard Rock, and with Justice Star Casino as partners. All three sponsors will be at this event, and we ask the public and the council to come out to this event tomorrow at six P.M.
What's the location again?
At the Boys and Girls Club. I don't have an address here.
The Old Thomas School?
I'm sorry, twenty-seven hundred West Nineteenth Avenue.
Thank you. Any other comments, any other special needs select?
Mr. President, I would just like to say, I too would like to extend my condolences to the family of Agnor Sumral. Her name is Sumral now, not McDaniel, but I would like to.
Well, I know she's McDaniel.
I would like to extend my condolences as well to that family. And Councilman Lay is correct, Sumral, she was a very, I mean, she worked in this community to help so many people, and I just want to extend my condolences to her daughter, as well as her son Lucky, and to her entire family. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other special needs select, or councilman at this time? Okay, I'm gonna speak, and then we'll move on. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. I'd like to thank this council that we have. I'd like to thank the former councilmen who have served. Any one of us could have served as president. Let's get that straight, because all of us have been voted by unit to serve. I'm humbled to serve in this capacity, but we're working together as a unit. All of us have different assignments, all of us have different things that we must do for the first council to do what it's designed to do. And so I want to thank my colleagues, not just for giving me an opportunity this year, but for the fact that you are qualified to serve in the capacity you've done. I want to thank the public for having trust in you and voting for you, and I want to thank God for this moment. I wanted to also say that as we move forward, and it will come, we'll have public comment. There is freedom of speech, no question about it, but we can't be abusive with it. Everyone has a right to come forward and say what they'd like to say regarding issues of our cities and what have you, but I'd like for you to be sensitive to the fellow elected officials, the fellow department heads, our mayor, when you approach your comments, because as I said when we were inaugurated, all of us have family, friends who care about us. We do make mistakes. All of us do. The difference between our mistakes and yours is, you read about ours. We don't always read about yours. So I ask you to show some compassion, make mistakes. I want to thank overseer, Dr. Kevin Warren, who's been a great friend for years, for your prayers for this council. You're an outstanding religious leader in our community, and we're extremely proud to work with you. I want to thank all the department heads that are here tonight, the ones that have served in the past, and as always, I want to thank our staff, as always, I want to thank the clerk's office, because they're here when most people are at home. And I want to thank our union leaders that are here. I want to thank our former police officers, our current police officers, first responders, firefighters, because they put their lives on the line. Firefighters go into a building, they have no idea what's inside. Most of us wouldn't do that. Police officers get up and go walk up to a car, they have no idea what they're dealing with. I know there's always contentious in this, in this country. I've been in it long enough, but at some point, we will have to learn to live with each other, perish, and I don't think that's the direction we want to go in. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to comment. There are no pending third and final readings, so therefore, the very next item will be our mayor, Jerome Prince. He will speak afterwards. We will have public comment. Mayor Prince?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I hope everyone can hear me on stage, so you can see also, I just want to thank Mr. President for the opportunity to speak. Glad to be back in the chambers again. As was stated earlier, I was a member of this chamber for two terms and actually elected to a third term before I went to Lake County Council, but it's definitely an honor and a privilege to be back here today. I did want to speak briefly to Councilman Brewer's concern about the drop-off site. It's my understanding, and this was an initiative that was actually engaged in before we took office, but just today, we had some discussion as to gather a greater understanding, and so it's my understanding that the Westside site has been discontinued. However, residents can continue to drop off at the Fifteenth and Clay site. In addition to placing items out on a daily or weekly basis, when you have your regular collection with the allied ways, you can set one large item per week out on the curbside for free pickup. The number for the reserve site or the announced drop-off site at Clay Street would be to call sanitary district at nine four four one two one one, but until further notice, that's what we've been told, and so that's the plan. Thank you all again.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
One final question to Mr. Mayor. Is there any way to put some type of signage out there so that way residents know where to go? We don't want to trust them, things that you know how that goes, but trust turn around and go a different direction. Well, we can put some type of signage, maybe not on that property, but somewhere adjacent to it, to letting people know that this is the one with the site, but you can't take it to that Clay Street site there.
That's a wonderful idea. We will confirm with sanitary district to make sure that they're aware of it and make the request as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to acknowledge our Gary City Court Judge, Yano Dijon, could you please stand so we can see the judge?
There you go. That's good.
Okay, now I'm gonna get your public comment because that's where we're at. Again, thank the press for coming out, and I'm not trying to control anyone's freedom of speech. I just want you to understand that we are human, we have feelings, we're not, but fairness is necessary. So now we'll have someone from our staff, Ms. Karen Lane, she will make the announcements. You have three minutes, am I right?
Three.
And you will be timed, so as she calls your name, please come to the podium and speak. Thank you.
Okay, our first speaker will be Mr. Jerry Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
What I'd like to talk about is building trade strength in our community. I'm a licensed plumber, forty years. I'm a unionized licensed plumber, forty years. And what I'd like to speak on, I'm the only African-American Gary resident, unionized plumber in this community. I think what I would like to see, the city of Gary come up with some type of training program. Our city is going to reimagine, and we're going to be redeveloping and rebuilding. We need to see more Gary residents capturing some of these dollars. You know, when I ride through the city and I see all these jobs going on, and you see no Gary residents, we have to stop. We have to put a stop to it. We must create our own training program. If not, our dollars are gonna continue to leave our community. Please, council, mayor, everyone, let's get started on this, please, and take a look at our ordinance sixty-nine seventy-two, which is in effect. When these jobs are bid out, let's make sure that ordinance is adhered to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jim Nowacki, followed by Linda Collins Brown.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jim Nowacki. I live in the second district. It's my opinion that there would be very few people in the city who would not have confidence in this seated council, and not only confidence, but the expectation that their confidence is not misplaced. We heard from a previous speaker talking about the pressing need for jobs in our community, and that's something that the council can take, and the administration can take some action on and make a big, have a big beneficial impact in our community. I was particularly touched by comments by Councilwoman Atkins regarding the issue that homicides in our city are not simply a statistic, but are real people, and I think that's a pressing need that this council has to address to make our city, to make our city a safer place for people to live and to work. And it would be my opinion and my suggestion to the council that as we look at the problems that are evident in our city, there would be an understanding on the part, on my part, and I think it should also be an understanding on the part of council members, that there are basic services that in the past have not been addressed. There are basic needs that have been pushed to the side in pursuit of larger goals and more ambitious projects, but I would just urge the council, and very humbly urge the council and the administration, to look at those long overlooked, basic services, basic needs that would be evident in any other community, but are painfully neglected in this community. So I know that it's a big job for the council to have. I have confidence in this council, and I believe that my confidence is not misplaced, and I would just urge the council and the administration to look diligently at fulfilling those basic needs, basic services, that would make the city a more desirable place to live, invest in, and a place to enjoy. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Good evening.
Can I comment on their comments before we move on? Or you want me to leave?
Yes, you can.
I'm sorry. Just real, stay right there.
Just one second.
Just real quick, so I just wanted to let Mr. Nowacki and Mr. Wilson know, in terms of our needs for trades, I actually just got some information over the weekend that I think will be beneficial to a lot of the residents in the city of Gary. So specifically, the state of Indiana has, under the program Next Level Jobs Indiana, they have a grant, which is called the Workforce Ready Grant, and that grant is designed to remove the financial barriers that prevent Hoosiers from getting trained in the necessary jobs in one of the five high-demand fields. And so most of those fields are trades, such as plumbing, welding, et cetera. So I think what myself and my colleagues should do, and what I can do, is make sure that we all have this information, and as we're going out into our respective districts, that we are communicating to the constituents how they can take advantage of this, because a lot of that is the barrier in terms of, they want to do it, but how do they get the funding to actually, you know, apply for the license, get the training that's needed? And so there's resources out there, we just have to tap on it from a federal level, as well as a state level, and this is one of the opportunities that we have to bring into our community. So I just want you guys to know that your confidence is valid, and so we are all working together to make sure that we are presenting that information to constituents across the city of Gary to take advantage of those gaps.
Thank you, councilwoman. Again, that is part of the strength that this council has. Each individual has some strength in what they do, and we're all working together to make it work well. Thank you, councilwoman.
Good evening. Linda Collins Brown, I'm a resident of the fifth. First of all, I'd like to say Happy New Year to each and every one of you, and I'm praying the Lord's continued blessings for each and every one of you. I'm actually, I am a servant, okay? Haven't been a- I haven't been a precinct committee person, I don't stop in the Fifth. I have concerns and complaints from people throughout the city, and I try to, uh, address those concerns with them, and I pass the buck, so to speak. So I stand before you today, and, uh, I'd like to say kudos and thank you in advance to Councilman, um, Godwin, because before the meeting started, I tried to get here early so that I could meet the new council persons, most of which I already knew. But anyway, I stand before you today, though I live in the Glen Park section of Gary, I had a classmate and friend bring to my attention a deplorable area in the First District. And I took the time to take pictures. It was put into the three-one-one to no avail. Uh, a person went by and saw no problem. And though I say this jokingly, I am truly serious, Stevie Wonder would recognize there's a problem. Okay? So anyway, um, Mr. Councilman, I'm sorry, Godwin did, uh, direct me to the proper contact person, the new person that is in place, and I will follow up and give that person a chance. And I did, and I will, as promised, give him these pictures to pass on to that individual. And I suggest that each of the council people take a look at that. Being in Gary and being a homeowner for forty-plus years, I'm concerned about the way our city looks. And even in my area, uh, there is a person from outside of the state that goes to the auction and buys these vehicles and is using his yard to store these places, and he doesn't live here. That's a problem I'm going to address personally because it is in my area. You could pass Forty-first at Pierce Street and you see tow trucks, three or four sitting in the yard. We cannot accept these things. You know, so many years ago, there was a person dumping in our area. We took pictures, turned it in, the judge took action, find the individual, and had them come back and pick up those things. I am confident that the new administration will, uh, take charge and enforce those ordinances that are already in place, so that our city can look better and be a better place to live. I raised my two children here, they're productive citizens, most of you know my daughter especially, I will call her name. But anyway, uh, I thank each and every one of you, all of the law enforcement people, firemen, know that you are appreciated. And I'd like to ask everyone to join me in giving all of the public servants a good night.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I want to thank you, Mrs. Brown, and certainly I'll be following up with the administration, Five Thousand Miller Avenue. Uh, we take light very seriously, and, uh, we certainly don't want any of our districts to look a mess. We want to put on our, our best face and make sure that they're, that residents know that there's going to be accountability, uh, for code enforcement violations. I do know that, uh, I don't know what the new personnel situation will be, but it, there was not a designated person for the First District, uh, for much of twenty nineteen, as I understand it. It was sort of understaffed, and other areas were a little, had even more challenges when it comes to code enforcement, and so resources were diverted in that direction. But I certainly look forward to working with, I believe it's Millie Glenn, who is the Code Enforcement Director, to follow up on these and other items. Thank you.
Thank you. We should have a code enforcement person now in the First District, am I right?
I will follow up to find out, I haven't been given a specific name.
That should have been funny for twenty twenty, am I right, Councilman Brown? About the code enforcement?
I'm not sure who, who the person is, but Millie Glenn is, in fact, the department head.
Thank you.
So I would start with her.
Okay, our next speaker is Michaela Spangleberg. Spangleberg, okay.
Good evening, Happy New Years, uh, and I hope everyone had a good holiday. Um, over the holiday break, I couldn't help but think of the families, um, who are still seeking justice for crimes that have been committed and never addressed in this city. And there's a lot of them. But some of them are crimes that have been committed by the police department. So over the last two years, we've had three killings that I know of in the city, uh, Camonte Cobbs, Thomas Watkins, and Rashad Cunningham. And also, of course, had, uh, an older gentleman who is hard of hearing or deaf, uh, be shot at, but thankfully not be killed, but being pretty grievously injured by the police very recently. And, uh, under the previous administration, uh, there had been a half-hearted attempt at creating a civilian review board after the community demanded it. However, that process got sidelined by the DOJ and other people, federal officials from outside of this community who got involved in that and had way too much of a say in what we do in our own community and how much say the community can and can't have to protect, I guess, federal interests. Um, so that process stalled, and it never got back on track. But seeing as how this is a new year, a new decade, we have some new council members, we have a new mayor, one would hope that the tone and the actions of this administration, this new administration would change. And again, Black Lives Matter Gary demands that the process for creating a civilian review board that's truly transparent, truly accountable to civilians be put into effect again with the participation, the active participation of the community. And I'd like to say that a lot of these families, well, I guess I can't say it. Oh, well.
Thank you.
Now we have Mr. Riso, followed by Kendra Johnson.
But I want to sum up our side of this, Mr. Riso. The subject I want to speak on is Blackmail, spelled M-A-I-L. It's not what they call you is what you answer to. A new year has begun, and the birth of K, which is the second holiday of the year, has come around the corner. Some Afro-Americans in this town get temporary Afro-American pride in themselves for their next two months due to K's birthday and Black History Month, which is fine. A lot of great individuals put in some work in order for a lot of us to be in a position that we are in physically, mentally, and financially. In my opinion, Gary at this moment is moving two steps forward and one step backwards. We are getting there slowly but surely, but people keep in mind that there are other towns and other entities that are looking forward to the seat of Gary to fill, especially downstate, for those who don't have the same opinion, who cares? In Indianapolis, they don't care about Gary. They go by numbers, that's why the census is important. You know, they're wise to find, due to the fact, in my opinion, that Gary has produced a lot of great people and a lot of firsts. First Afro-American mayor, first woman mayor to come out of this town. And conjecture would allow of us having a permanent suntan. Let's try to work together as a whole town to minimize some of our bad factors that this town has grandfathered in through the media. Speaking of the media, when the media reports a crime in Gary, they don't just headline an address, they just holler, "In the city of Gary," which means that all of us are affected by any type of crime that we let go on in our city, whether we can report it or whether or not we in fact allow it to go on. You're either part of the problem or you're part of the solution, so let's work together as a unit. There's a new administration, and it's younger blood, and it's good, I'm willing to work with anybody who's willing to work with me. And to mention, I see everybody's got black and gray on, like maybe this is a new thing for you guys up there, but, uh, working together, we got mixed personalities. And we need all the politicians, not politicians, but public servants, that's the key thing. Someone who's going to serve the community and think about, if I wasn't in the position that I am simply because these people put me there, where would I be? What would I like as a regular citizen? And that's what we need to keep in mind to strive for. Gary is coming back. However, it ain't getting messed up overnight, so we all make the payments move. We are now looking at the younger generation and looking at some of you guys up there making a way for the younger generation. When this town gets to a hundred percent, a lot of us is not going to want to enjoy it, and some of us might not be here, but, uh, trying to step up a little bit, but y'all are willing to say.
Good evening to the council, those present and those joining us our way of the media. My name is Kendra Johnson. And first of all, I would like to thank each and every one of the individuals who were keeping me abreast of what was going on in my city while I was on personal assignment in various areas in this country. Um, I'd also like to say this evening, I know I saw the statement about the concerning deaf heart appearing or speech impaired, but the equipment this evening for communicating the meeting, please recheck it, because some of us present here could not hear some of the council members that were speaking. And although some people didn't want to say anything, I want to say something. Also, uh, I know the census contest is a great idea, but I would have loved to see the Census Bureau offer a contest for college students considering the census, because since they're looking for money, it could have been the census opportunity of the decade. I'd also like to applaud the citizens of this city, that when they say something, they say something. Individuals like Eloise Smith, when she sees doors of the schools open and other exposed areas, will contact the necessary people to let them know. And those individuals that have called me because they've said, "We will, we will definitely try to get answers and results." But I'd like to applaud some of them for taking the time to do that. Also, this year, this is a new decade. And as a full-time, well, I'm sorry, as a full-generation Gary citizen, a lifelong resident of Gary, Indiana, and proud of it, a state-recognized citizen's advocate, originally trained in federal regulations in three areas, I encourage everyone, from the youngest to the oldest, advocate, let your voice be heard. Be an activist, get involved, because the greatest legacy you can make is to try and make your city and the world better than when you got here. Thank you, Happy New Year, and congratulations to each and every one of you that are now in these positions.
We have two more speakers. Next, we have Ann Walker. And our last speaker is Mr. Wazuli.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to see the new members on the council who I will be missing with you through the year. And to the media, my name is Ann Walker, I'm from the Third District. And, uh, the one thing, uh, we talked to Mayor Brown about, uh, the lights out on Twentieth and Lane, and come to find out that they are wooden, so that means it belonged to the city. So we all know we're going to get lights back there, not just right over by the playground where the kids be at, so we need, we need those lights fixed. And secondly, I wanted to ask, down Fifth Avenue, people park, and that's a state road. People, like on Fourth Avenue, they don't park, that state. But all up and down Fifth Avenue, they're parking. So, uh, the police needed to get in touch, put some notices on these cars to get them off Fifth Avenue. And that's all I had to say today. You all have a good one.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Mayor, community. A couple things. First, I want to follow up on, uh, what Jerry talked about with these jobs, issues with the jobs in our community. I'm glad you're going to be looking at that as something to champion, because that's so important. We need to have our money recycled up in our community. Everybody knows our tax issues, but, you know, if we don't live here and not work here, you know, it's going to be like, I just think about like the library board and library situations, our library administrators, and what have you, living outside the city, you know, their tax money going to where they live. They need to become in Gary, that's where they get paid from. Um, railroad crossings in Glen Park, just wanted to get an update on that, what's happening with that? Um, I was riding out Forty-first recently, just kind of forgot, it was dark, I went, wow, so, you know, was able to turn around, but, uh, that's, that's ridiculous. You know, we need to do something about that still. Hopefully, it's still in the works. Um, Michaela talked about Black Lives Matter and the issue with the independent, uh, civilian review board. I remember when Black Lives Matter first started in Gary, um, there had only been like one killing, Vincent Smith, like in the last ten or twelve years, and so we can talk about that, you know? Some of our main issues are having these outside police forces coming in here policing our people and a few other issues like that, but we're still calling for the independent civil, uh, civilian review board. And, you know, she mentioned the names of the eighteen-year-old man, of Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Watkins. And so, no, we need to really do that and look at that. I know the previous administration did have meetings around the community talking about that, but hopefully we'll be able to pick that back up again and give that some serious, uh, looking into. I saw the article in the paper too, that you all addressed that, so that's good to hear. Um, Mayor, I was watching the inauguration, didn't get a chance to go, but I did get a chance to view it, and the fifty-eight killings that took place in Gary last year, it was kind of shocking that it was that many. And, and I know, uh, new council person, you mentioned, I'll, we don't want to normalize that, but unfortunately, it has been normalized here in our community, so we have to change that. And the previous council, one of the things that they did last, during their last session, is we had, um, a resolution that we brought forth and that you all passed condemning the ratchet radio stations, the killer violent vulgar radio stations that normalize this sort of behavior with the type of music that they play that specifically targeted to African children, not just in Gary, Chicago, but all around the country. And so I would hope that we would probably, or look to put more pressure on the station, especially the one in Hammond area, which is in our listening area, that plays vile vulgar and violent music, bragging on and encouraging us to shoot and kill each other constantly. I guarantee you, while we've been at this meeting for the last hour and fifteen minutes, they played ten, fifteen songs that said, bragged about blowing people's faces off and having, uh, uh, shooting you on your block and seeing you to the other side. I guarantee you that. So that needs to be properly addressed, and again, they specifically target black people with that reason. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, please. I want to, uh, follow up on both what Mr. Wilson and Mr. Wazuli, uh, said as it relates to jobs, and especially making sure that jobs stay local. It makes a huge difference when we ensure that our residents, especially those who work for city government, live in this city. I don't like that Officer Lilly, who lives in the First District, and you can go in the First District and not know Officer Lilly. It makes a huge difference that our police officers and firefighters are not exempted by state statute, but we need to start with our department heads, and we need to make sure that we're really enforcing even our ordinance, the jobs that we do control. Because you can't work for the city of Chicago and not live in the city of Chicago. And personally, they're exempt by state statute in Illinois. We need to have that same pride in our city. I spend every day selling this city to people, and it's embarrassing to tell people, and I've had to do this historically, when we didn't have state fire chief or police chief not live in the whole city. What does this say about us? And so I want us and I encourage my colleagues to really think very strongly about truly enforcing our residency ordinance, that's something we control. We don't control what outside companies decide to do necessarily, it's hard to enforce that, we certainly want to do that, but that which we have control over, we should really encourage.
over, we should really encourage folks to hire locally, including City Hall.
Any comments, any council, before we adjourn?
Mr. President, just before we adjourn, I know there's a lot of talk about police civilian review board, but I'd like to just let the public know that the Police Commission is a public meeting that's done in the public, and I don't know if any of you all ever went to the Police Commission meeting. Anything, there's nothing done in private, everything is done in the open. I would ask that you start there and start visiting those meetings there, because some of the questions that you may have, you may find them inside the Police Commission meeting. So I just want to let the public know that also.
Thank you. Again, I want to congratulate all my fellow council members, as well as our Vice President, Mr. Will Godwin, the First District, and our chairman, Councilman, and President of the Council, and our brother, to welcome. You have something to say?
Um, okay.
First, one last thing. Change the meeting. Yes. Mr. President, I know we have a regular scheduled meeting from the fourteenth to twenty eighth. Make a motion that we have our meeting changed to the twenty-eighth with a conflict with the council that has to go to a aline that day.
There's a motion to change the aline to the twenty-first, which is in fact the history of the council. The people are picking up this. Second.
Yes.
Counselman Boer.
Yes.
Counselwoman Brown.
Yes.
Counselwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Counselman Godwin.
Yes.
Counselman Lay.
Yes.
Counselman Weatherspoon.
Yes.
Counselman Williams.
Yes.
And President Brown.
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is nine to zero.
The vote is nine to zero. The vote, twenty, twenty, so it's based on the current case, the general opinion, that six to eight. Thank you, everybody, for your support.